All right, we will call the council meetings order. Please rise for the prayer and pledge allegiance.
Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, and thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. And forgive us our trespasses, and we forgive those trespass against us, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever and ever.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen.
All right, good evening, everybody. We'll start with item D, the approval of minutes. In the absence of any objections or corrections, the minutes shall stand approved from the February seventeenth, 2025 regular council meeting. Hearing none, those will stand approved. Item E is citizen communication. If there's anyone in attendance that would like to address council, now would be the time to do so. Feel free to come up to the podium at your name and address, and we'll give you five minutes. Hearing none. Item F is report from council committees. F1, the Finance and Budget Committee did not meet on February twenty-fourth, 2025 due to lack of agenda items. F2, the Safety and Human Resources Committee did meet on February twenty-fourth, 2025. And Jordan?
Yeah, we discussed the 2025 contracts and reviewed EMS cost and revenues.
Yes, sir. F3, the Technology and Communications Committee did not meet earlier tonight due to lack of agenda items. And F4, the Parks and Recreation Committee met earlier tonight. And Brittany?
We discussed the pickleball courts and skate park. Recommendation to council for the pickleball court to Oakwood Park and keep the skate park equipment at Swerengen.
Thank you, ma'am. Item H is introduction of new ordinances and resolutions. H1, ordinance number 011-25, and ordinance amending chapter 951 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Napoleon, Ohio, specifically sections 951.04 and 951.05. Burial lots, charges for and restrictions, repurpose, repurchase, excuse me. Do you have a motion?
Motion.
One second.
Yes, Council President, this review of these rates was basically prompted by a request by Tony for changes to the indigent burial form. Once I started looking into that and reviewing some of the codified ordinances in regard to cemeteries, I realized there were a lot of charges that haven't been updated since 2002. So I met with Tony and basically we started reviewing what local cemeteries were charging for their rates for both burial and the lots. And I also took into consideration the cost or inflation factor over the last 23 years. Combined those two and really came up with this new rate structure, very competitive with local cemeteries. And quite frankly, every single one of them is below where inflation told me it should be. So we're where we should be, I believe, with the adjusted rates.
Thank you, Andy. Questions or comments from council? Hearing none. Okay, let's just call the roll on the first read.
Ken?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Brittany?
Yes.
Yes. That will move to second read. Thank you, Andy.
Thank you.
Item I, the second reading of ordinances and resolutions. I1 is ordinance number 007-25, and ordinance amending chapter 955 of the Codified Code of Ordinances of the City of Napoleon, Ohio, specifically sections 955.09 are golf privilege fee. Is there a motion?
No motion.
Second. Andy?
Yes, Council President, as we've discussed in the past, this just increases each one of those corporate rates by $200 for the coming year. Otherwise, there's no other changes to the ordinance.
Thank you, sir. Any discussion from council? Michaela, please call the roll.
Ken?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Brittany?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
That will move to third read. Item J, third reading of ordinances and resolutions that are in this evening. Item K, good of the city. K1 is discussion or action. The City of Napoleon's Department of Public Works requests approval of the bid documents for the 2025 sanitary sewer cleaning. Andy?
Yes, Council President, I will defer to our Public Works Director to explain what he's requesting here.
Yes, as some of you may know, some of you may not remember, the City of Napoleon required to clean all of their sanitary sewers on a 10-year cycle. That does not mean that what we clean this year will be get cleaned in 10 years. It's just in a 10-year cycle, we have to clean all of them. We are restarting that 10-year cycle this year. We have reviewed what is our problem areas with our sanitary sewer department and the operations superintendent. With the assistance of our GIS technician, we were able to put together portions of town. Primarily, we're focusing on the south side and some of the northwest portion of the city for 2025 and the North Crest area as well. But we've got the documents together, and traditionally, we've tried to bid these in three-year sections. So the bid documents are prepared to receive bids for '25, '26, and '27. The budget for this year is $100,000, and we have a completion date of August 29th, 2025. We just request council's approval so we can advertise this project for bids.
Thank you, Chad.
Chad, is there any grants available for this?
Not for this one. Generally, on some of our larger projects, we do pursue grant funding. Traditionally, we've had more success receiving grant funding for projects that are required through the Long-Term Control Plan. This one is just required for every municipality in the state of Ohio by the EPA. So we wouldn't score very well, and we've been reserving some of those for our larger projects, such as you'll see here shortly with East Washington.
Thank you.
And Chad just mentioned or referenced the Long-Term Control Plan. That whole plan was developed as part of our findings and orders back 25 years ago that came down on us by the EPA to fix our sewer system in Napoleon. So it's basically a plan developed over a period of time to do all of that. So when you put in a grant application that is part of a long-term control plan project, you are far more likely to get funding for it.
Chad, is that $100,000 annually?
Yes. Our estimated cost for this project is actually $100,000. The estimated costs for '26 and '27 were slightly less, approximately $90,000 for each of those. But those are just estimates. We're basing that off of prices we saw the last few years.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions over council? If not, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
I'll second.
Thank you. Michaela, please call the roll.
Ken?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Brittany?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes. Okay, that's been approved. Thank you, Chad. Item K2, discussion or action. The City of Napoleon's Department of Public Works requests approval of the plans and specifications for the 2025 miscellaneous streets improvement project. Andy?
Yes, for a second time, I will defer to my Public Works Director.
As you're familiar, annually, we come to you with what we term our miscellaneous street improvements project. This year, we looked at what was some of the major problem areas, and we know we've had a lot of complaints with some of the streets in Twin Oaks. And having inspected them, they are in very poor condition. The two that's got most of our attention were newer drive and heck. The plans for this project would be to remove the concrete on these two streets to full length. We will leave the curves in place, but the concrete portion of the street will be removed and replaced with asphalt. And also to note, there's a small section approximately 20 feet long where Bordeaux goes from Twin Oaks to Riviera Heights. The last 20, 30 feet or so will also be replaced in the same manner. The estimate for this project is $419,000, and the budget for the project was $500,000. The completion date's October 31st. The reason for the extended completion date is to hopefully receive lower pricing. We're getting a little later in the year to put projects out. We're hoping we can get some prices lower because asphalt and concrete have gone up so much. So at this time, just requesting your approval so we can advertise this project for bids.
Thank you, Chad. Any discussion on streets improvement?
With the completion date with the October 31st, what are we projecting as far as actually starting the project?
I don't foresee this being a project that would start in April and end in October. Generally, for projects like this, the contractors want to get in, get out. But we wouldn't dictate when they started, whether they would start, say, in late April or May, or if they would start in August or September. But regardless, they would still have, it would still be a short construction window just due to the nature of the work. Because if they leave, once they remove the concrete, if they leave, they subgrade the dirt exposed, that will cause them to increase their costs if it gets rained on continuously. So I can't say for sure when it would start, but I look for it to be no more than approximately an eight-week construction window. And I think that's a little on the long side. I wouldn't expect it to be that long. And they'll have to maintain access to all homes, all driveways. There may be times when homeowners can't get in their driveway, but they'd be able to park in front of their residence. But that would only be when everything's dug out before we get the new asphalt back in.
Thank you.
Chad, what are your recommendation for the concrete when they tear that out? Is it something that we could use as a city and save us money?
We are, last year, Brian and I, the operations superintendent, discussed what we had at the yard waste site as far as our concrete pile, and we closed it. This year, we got creative. We're going to use our crushed concrete on the East Washington Street project. So we're going to use everything we've got. So we're going to start this year on city projects, have the concrete taken to our yard, and we will continue to use the crushed concrete on other projects as long as it's not a state highway. If it's a residential local street, we'll use that for some of our trench backfill and place a fine stone from the quarry. So we are going to take this concrete to the yard waste site and then probably crush it later this year, and then use it next year on the project.
Would that save us some money that, because they don't have to dispose of it?
It got us some lower prices. It doesn't necessarily save us on disposal, but it saves us on the next project so we don't have to buy stones. We can use what we have. The cost to crush the concrete is less than trucking it in from a quarry. So, and we did, like I said, we did use, or we had in the bid for East Washington the use of everything we've got out at the site, at the yard waste site.
Thank you.
You'll see future savings.
Anything else? If not, do we have a motion to approve?
Motion. Second.
Thank you. Michaela, please call the roll.
Ken?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Tom?
Epstein.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Brittany?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Okay, item K3, discussion or action. Recommendation to award Hillibrand &amp; Sons Construction the contract for the East Washington Street Improvements Project in the amount of $3,119,622.90. Andy?
Yes, Council President, since my director of public works has done such a phenomenal job this evening, I'm going to pass this one off to him as well.
Thank you. I included a memo in your packet. On February 20th, we opened bids for this project at the county commissioner's office. We received two bids, the low bid being that of Hillibrand &amp; Sons Construction. The engineer's estimate on the project was $2,950,000. The budget for the project was $3,950,000. As you can see on the memo, obviously, I have the bids listed there, but we have three grants attached to this project. To go back to Brittany's point, we did apply for a large amount of grant funding on this project. This is a long-term control plan project. This is phase one of two. Eventually, we'll have to replace the sewer tube from East Washington to downtown. The grants there totaling around $1.6 million, a little over that. So majority of the project will be covered through grant funding. We've worked with Hillibrand &amp; Sons in the past, and we haven't had any complaints with their work. And having reviewed their bids, it is my recommendation that council award the project to Hillibrand &amp; Sons in the amount of $3,119,622.90. And a note there to the completion date for this project is August 16th.
Thank you, Chad.
Once again, excuse me, he did mention the Long-Term Control Plan. This is one of the last major projects with that plan, correct, Chad? This is next year's project?
The only remaining tight project in the plan is phase two of this project. Once that's completed, and once the wastewater treatment plant expansion project has not closed, we're hoping to close that soon, but the majority of the work's done, the day is up and running. Van Heining Pump Station was another major project we finished, I believe, two years ago. Once this is complete, we'll have phase two due by the end of 2029. We have an SSO in town we're required to close this year. We'll get that closed. All it is, is plug and a pipe. Once phase two of this is completed, then we have to do a sewer model and study of our entire system, and then the Long-Term Control Plan will be complete. I believe that model is required to be finished by 2031. If we get phase two of East Washington finished ahead of schedule, or we may move those dates up, but the only major construction left is phase two of East Washington Street project, which won't be on East Washington Street.
Thank you, Chad. Any other questions? Chad, I'd just like to thank you for the grant work there that you did for those projects. $1.6 million is a hell of a grant, so thank you. Okay, do we have a motion to award the project to Hillibrand &amp; Sons?
Motion.
Second.
Thank you. Michaela, please call the roll.
Ken?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Jordan?
Epstein.
Tom?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Brittany?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
That has been awarded. Item K4, discussion or action to accept the rates for Henry County South Joint Ambulance District, Freedom Township, Napoleon Township, Harrison Township, and the Village of Florida. Andy, I'll turn it over to you for this one.
Chad? Yes, Council President, these rates that we establish every year are based on actual costs from the year before. So these rates are simply based on to cover the cost for last year. They're based on a complex formula of population for the EMS side and on the fire side, its property values in those particular jurisdictions. I would ask for, I'm certainly asking for, you direct the law director to draft the legislation, and I would ask for a suspension of rules as well to go along with that so we can get this in place by April 1st.
Andy, you're looking to pass it on first read next meeting?
With suspension.
Okay.
Yes, please.
Chief Bowen, anything to add from your perspective?
Yeah. And I was not at the meeting. We were out of town last Monday night, so I don't know if they had anything to add to you.
There was several questions, but enough and all there.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay. Any discussion from council? Do we have a motion to direct the law director?
A motion.
Second.
Thank you. Michaela, please call the roll.
Ken?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Brittany?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Item K5, discussion or action to accept the training grant award from the Ohio State Fire Marshal in the amount of $450 for the fire department. Andy?
Yes, Council President, I will pass this one off to the fire chief.
This is the annual grant we apply for every year. We do an EMS one, we put maybe we do a fire one through the marshal's office. We were able to get three classes reimbursed this year, each of $150 apiece. Just the annual thing we do. I just ask you guys to approve it so we can accept it.
Thank you, chief.
Thanks, chief.
Any questions or comments?
Motion to accept.
Thank you, sir. Third second?
Second.
Michaela, please call the roll.
Ken?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Brittany?
Yes.
Ross?
Chief, thank you as well for those grant funds. We always appreciate it.
It all counts.
That's right.
Item K6, discussion or action to review the Parks and Recreation Committee and Parks and Recreation Board recommendation in regards to the pickleball court and skate park. Andy?
Yes, Council President, I had this one added to good of the city. I wasn't sure what direction things were going to go tonight. Previous meeting, they seemed to flow pretty smoothly. As Council President Schwab mentioned earlier, they decided to go with new courts at a location to be determined. Right now, it looks like Oakwood Park. But that was a direction that came from both the committee and the Parks and Recreation Board. So I don't know if you wanted to add any more, but that's, in a nutshell, that's what it came to be.
I would just jump in because I had the one question. So again, I think there's four things Jordan corrected me. Was the restrooms, was the growth for more courts? Parking, to I would say, is a lesser degree. I think south side would have been okay, but it's better.
Yep.
And then the noise issue was brought up by attendees. So I think those four points were pretty important. You know, that's kind of even, and also, I think Tony did a good job. We'll also kind of look into seeing if they go asphalt versus concrete, if there's any opportunity or option there. So those are kind of the key things that I think swayed me to say, yes.
Yeah, I think you're right. And as I said in the meeting, I mean, I was hell-bent on going, you know, going over Swerengen Park with these things. And until Ben Nelson spoke at the last council meeting and talked about, you know, as a pickleball, they seem to make a lot of noise. And is that really the location you want to put them? And since then, I've talked to some other people, and that's a very real issue. So I think moving them to a more remote location is probably the best thing to do. I didn't necessarily need any action. I was just, I just wanted it as a point of discussion. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments on this topic?
I'd had one.
Just a?
I was able to listen to all of the conversations. And specifically, they talked about that noise. And the one location that we were talking about is Oakwood Park, the north side, near the basketball courts. And that's not really any farther away from Hudson and Fair that these courts would have been at Swerengen. And I just want to point that out. Even though they're somewhat masked by some trees and brush, those houses are still as close. I like the idea, but I wonder if, are we looking at that Hudson and Fair Street as well as we were looking at the Swerengen because they were so open over there, and they're not as open here? Drove down through there, looked around this weekend, and those houses are pretty close. And if we're going to start things at seven o'clock when it's light, I'm kind of wondering if that's not going to affect Hudson and Fair Street to some extent? And if it goes late, and there's lights later on, is that something we were talking about, Tony?
It wasn't, it was not part of this?
This project.
Right.
But it's, it's?
It would certainly be something.
It would be something you would consider. I just, I just want to mention that I still think there might be a noise issue there when we're looking at sites. I'm not against the site, but I don't know if it's prudent that those people be pulled or that, you know, and let her go out. That this is, we're planning on this being very close to at least get them a heads-up opportunity to come to a meeting and talk about that possibility. The experts were saying it's noisy.
Yeah, this could very well be the case there. I will, I will mention that there is a long road arborvitae there that could help mask some of the noise. The other area at Oakwood that we are looking at as well would be closer to the entrance. In between the football field and the parking lot, that would be a little bit further away from residential area. So if we could fit it in that foot, that might be even a better spot.
That would be better for noise. And I understood, looking at the aerials on that recently, that it's a tight spot there to expand with.
The expansion would be?
Was that where you were talking about moving a hill or lowering a hill?
Yes.
Okay. Well, if I just mentioned it, I wouldn't feel right if I didn't mention it. Hudson and Fair are still pretty close to those spots, and arborvitae just don't block much. I've had them around my house for 25 years before I cut them down, and I could talk right through them from my back porch to my neighbor. I just couldn't see. So I just wanted to mention it out loud because out of sight, out of mind, those houses are just as close as Swerengen. So that's all I wanted to say, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Watson.
So just for discussion off of Bobby's point, with baseball being out there and it goes late, do we recall any noise complaints with that? I know it's kind of apples to oranges in this concept, but?
Not really. I can't say that. I've got many back to my desk. They usually go till, until it's dark, so they're a little bit at night. And I can't get them back there this year. It's a, it's a difficult part, for sure, so maybe we'll let them, I don't know.
Yeah.
There's quite a bit of distance between those ball fields back there and Hudson and Fair. If you look at the aerials, this would be literally right up, almost to the dead end of Hudson. And Fair is, if you look at the aerial, I think you'll see. I just wanted to mention it again.
Right, yeah, I appreciate that.
Very in favor of the project, and that really looks like a beautiful site. But there still would be that noise issue in those, in that neighborhood there.
Yeah.
Okay, no action on this topic, Andy?
That's correct.
All right. We'll go around the table then. Andy, I'll start with you this evening.
Okay. The Scott Street project, at the last council meeting, we were, I was eager to tell you that the, due to some federal aid funds that we had received, our $545,000 that we had budgeted for that project had been reduced to $76,086. Monday, no, late last Thursday, we received notice from ODOT, and they have increased our share of the project by $118,358. So our total will now be $194,444 for that project. Which, well, is it is a significant increase, 156% or something. It's still way under our budgeted amount for that project. So I just wanted to make council aware of that, that the project was going to cost us more than I told you it was going to cost us last council meeting. I don't believe there's any action required by council on that.
No action at this time. They are actively bidding the project. No action at this time. They are actively bidding the project for us. It'll be in conjunction with their State Route 108 improvements, and they have asked me and my staff to be involved in the inspection. I believe we'll be able to reduce that number, but that is the number we will have to put in escrow, and I've forwarded that information to the financial director, and I, I believe that's going to be done this week.
Thanks, Chad.
I'm sorry, I might have missed what you said. They notified us that we increased, but I didn't hear why they increased it. Did they give a reason why they increased?
Right before they put the bid out, they required us to increase some quantities. I didn't necessarily agree with the increases, but they wanted them increased, and also they only received one bid. They won't let me see the bids. They said I can see the bids after they award it. I suspect the asphalt prices were quite high, since there was only one bidder. But I don't know, and I, I can't tell you until I see the bid tabulation sheet.
Thank you.
Which they'll release after they award the project.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chad.
I have a question on that. Is this part of the miscellaneous streets improvements, or is this separate?
This is separate.
It's a separate item in the budget. In the budget, we had, for 2025, we had budgeted half a million dollars for miscellaneous streets and $545,000 for the Scott Street improvements. Fortunately, Scott Street's a little under $200,000, because I was able to convince them to let us be covered under what's called the Urban Paying Program, which it wasn't originally set up for. But, so even with the increase, we're still well below budget.
Can we use that savings that we're going to make to do other streets, or anything?
We have discussed that. It's going to really depend upon, the short answer is yes. It's going to depend upon where our bids come in for miscellaneous streets, and add that to what's left here. We do have our, our eyes on some streets that we'd like to attack, but it's really going to depend on where the bids come in for miscellaneous streets.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure. Anything else?
Yes, item two. Last week, went to Washington DC. People have asked me if I thought it was a good trip. I said, well, it was kind of the way I anticipated. We have two brand-new senators in DC. I think they're both trying to get their feet on the ground. The one is still trying to put together his, his staff. So we were unable to meet with Huestead, Senator Huestead's staff, on Monday. We did stop by his office unannounced and gave them some information on the three projects that we are interested in, in seeking help with, which is the fire, fire truck, fire trucks, PD facilities, and the water line underneath the river. We did meet with Moreno's staffer, and we also met with Bob Latta. I guess, we'll wait and see what, what those meetings bring. One thing we did discover, unfortunately, is we thought we had received $1.9 million from Senator Brown. Last year, he got that into the Senate appropriations budget. The way it works is the Senate comes up with their budget, and the House comes up with their budget, and they get together in conference, and presto gizmo, it develops into the budget that gets presented to the president for his signature. It never made it that far. Congress, in the last couple of years, have not put together a budget, and they are acting under a continuing resolution, and continue to act under continuing, continuing resolutions. So unfortunately, the $1.9 million that Brown had said was going to be there is not going to be there. So it's, it's basically going away. With that said, I anticipate trying to go the political route and get some people to talk to some people, and contact Senator Moreno, and, and try and get some money put back for that project. I would love to see the $1.9 million go back in, so they can develop a budget and finally get it in a budget. But until that happens, we're not going to know. We don't have the $1.9 million. So that was somewhat disappointing. Fast forward to Tuesday, we did our public power thing. We, we went over to Capitol Hill and, and met with both senators, Huestead and Moreno, and, and Bob Latta as well, and discuss the public power issues, like tax exempt financing. While it's never really been threatened, there's always kind of that cloud. We don't want it to go away, so it always comes up. We always try to tell them, you can't let that go away. It's a big deal to municipalities and electrical, electric business companies. Permitting reform, we learned where it takes as long to get a permit to build a gas-fired plant than it does to build it. So it's somewhat ridiculous. Everybody's aware of it. Everybody agreed with us, said, yeah, we're going to work on that, so we'll see where that goes. And then finally, the sequestration issue came up, which had been beating the dead horse for years. I tried to get the Ohio group to not even talk about it, because again, there's no point in it, but they did bring that up again, and, and talked it a little bit, but I don't think it's going to go anywhere. By and large, I mean, it was a, our travels went smoothly, and it was a, it was a good trip. Finally, I will ask for a brief executive session to discuss the acquisition of property, as well as a conference with the law director concerning pending litigation.
Thank you, sir.
Billy?
Nothing from me, thank you.
Nothing this evening.
I got nothing.
Mr. Mayor?
Nothing.
Brittany? Dr. Dave? Nothing for me. Tom? Nothing, thank you. Lori?
Nothing for me.
Billy, thank you for being here.
All right. Nothing for me as well. I would just ask for a motion to go into executive session one for pending litigation. If we have a motion for that, please.
Motion.
Second.
Michaela, please call the roll for that.
Ken?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Brittany?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
And secondly, the acquisition of property. Is there a motion?
A motion.
Second.
Michaela, please call the roll.
Ken?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Brittany?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
All right. We'll be motion, please.
Motion.
Second.
Thank you. Michaela, please call the roll.
Ken?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Brittany?
Yes.
Ross?
Can we also have a motion come out of executive session for the acquisition of property?
A motion.
Second.
Michaela, please call the roll.
Ken?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Brittany?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
All right. No action taken on both of those items. Item M is approved payment of bills. In the absence of any objections or corrections, the payment of bills and financial reports shall stand approved.
Come on. Any questions? Nothing above mushroom shoes? I had a bet on that one.
I'm hearing none. They will stand approved. Is there a motion to adjourn?
A motion.
Second.
Michaela, please call the roll.
Ken?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Brittany?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Good night, everybody.